It's ten o'clock, so I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. This is a regular Commissioners' Court meeting for the County of Starr, Tuesday, May 28th. I'd like to welcome everyone and thank you all for being here. Let the record show that we do have quorum, with everyone being present. Everyone will please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands: One nation, under God, in the name of the Lord, and in the name of the justice.
First item is, is claims, Mr. Pettis, are they?
Yes, sir. Those claims have been reviewed and recommended.
Motion to approve. Moved and second to approve. Discussion. All in fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Next item is the vendors.
Again, the new vendors have to review. I move that we approve them.
Moved and second to approve. Discussion. All in fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. We have a couple of presentations, and then we have some proclamations, but let's go ahead and do the presentations first. First one is from AT&amp;T, any representatives. Please identify yourself for the record.
My name is Gene Moore.
On the mic, please.
My name is Gene Moore, from AT&amp;T. Okay. Appreciate being here today. I represent a program by the state of Texas called the Election Security Assessment Program. It is a funded program that is 100 percent free to the counties. It was paid for via a Help America Vote Act grant back in March of 2018, and it is broken up into two phases of funding. The first phase is the assessment piece, which is what we're talking about today, and the second piece is the remediation piece of going in and fixing what we found. This is available to all 254 counties across the state, and that's what I spend most of my time doing, is kind of bouncing from county to county, presenting to folks like you all, talking about the program. Do you all know anything about the program? Because I know I have a condensed period of time to speak, so I don't know where to start.
I don't. I don't know about the program.
Okay.
You're the only one that knows.
So I will, I'll start at a high level, which I already did, from the HAVA funding grant,
and work my way down and try to put this in a little five-minute capsule. So basically, what we are doing is the state of Texas received the funding from the federal government back in March of 18. And with that, the state of Texas has decided to come out with a very specific program to go in and look at the election infrastructure in each one of these counties and assess that very specifically. So we have a contracting company that we work with, that this is all they do, is all around the country, is go in and assess election infrastructures. That infrastructure consists of the technology piece, the people, as well as the processes that take place during an election. And so what we will do is, we will send a team out here, probably one to two days, we'll have a couple of assessors come out, they'll walk through all those three phases, those areas with the county, and then we will, after a couple of days, we will leave, we'll go back, we will do remote work, things like dark web scanning, we'll go out there and we'll look for a lot of, we're finding a lot of what they call brand hijacking, which is a lot of false websites being set up to basically deceive our voters, to be able to say, "Come in here and put in our information," that kind of thing, and then it goes off to, you know, some foreign body that clearly is not the county. And so we'll go back and do about six weeks of that work, and then we'll produce about a 20- to 30-page document that is provided back to the county through a secure server. So you will have a point of contact at the county that will run the project, and they will be the only ones that will have access to downloading that information. With that, you will also receive what is called an Election Security Assessment Scorecard, which is what you have in front of you now. That kind of gives you a little condensed version of what the, what the ultimate goal is, is to provide the county an overall score. We'll look at each piece of information that we find, we'll rank it from critical down to low risk, and basically, it will give you a roadmap at the county, again, for people, process, and technology. It'll give you a roadmap of all three of those areas to be able to go in and fix whatever you need to fix. However, what I will say is that there is no obligation to the county to fix anything. So by approving it and going through the assessment, you are not signing up for, hey, we have to go spend money out of our budget to go do something, right? We would think that that was something the county would do, probably naturally, but it's not something that is mandated. However, that leads us to the second phase. The second phase is the remediation portion, where we go in and fix the issues that are found. There is approximately $14 million that is set aside through this HAVA funding grant to pay the counties to go in and fix what is found wrong. We have not made a decision, I say "we," we're the provider. Keith Ingram at the state of Texas has not made a decision yet as how they're going to disperse those funds. All we know is that you are not going to be allowed to use those funds if you don't participate in Phase One. That's the only announcement that they've made about it.
I'm sorry, if we don't purchase?
No. If you don't do the assessment through their program...
Participate.
Correct. If you don't participate in that program, then you're not allowed to use the funds that are available through that program as well. So, and that was the announcement that they had made to the election officials and the county clerks back in January. As far as the dispersment itself, we don't know if it's going to be a first-come, first-served, if it's going to be a 50-50 matching, we, we just don't know, just not enough information. And that's something that we are working with them on a weekly basis, I mean, with them every week in Austin, and we'll be talking about that tomorrow as well, as we're kind of working through that program. So all we're doing today is we're asking the authority of the commissioners, with the ultimate authority of the signature of the judge, to be able to allow your county to take part in that program, and then we will provide you the information back through a secured server. We'll have a wrap-up call, go over it with your county, and whoever you would like to designate to be part of that, that team, to be able to address those issues, so you all can answer or ask anything you need. And one reason I gave you the cards as well is even after we leave that wrap-up call, we're still available, so if there's any questions, any concerns, hey, we found this, we're not sure what it means, that's what we're here for. Ask us, and we will help get you the answers.
Based on your assessment, what would you be looking for? Your assessment? You will be working with our election administrator, right? Hand out hand?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir. I will be, it's really a joint effort, so we'll be working with you, through the election official, but it will, we'll use the leadership that are involved in the elections, as well as IT will play a role in this as well, so it's really kind of a collective discussion. There are a number of things that we look for, some of the things that we have found, and I can't disclose what counties they are, but some of the things we have found is we have found malware on computers, on servers...
Viruses.
Viruses, things like that, that we found one the other day, as a matter of fact, was actually infected on the very last computer that was being used to send the results back to the state. So that's pretty bad. And it was being, it was being sent off to a country that probably none of us speak the language. So that's some of the things that we're finding. We're finding a lot of, we're finding a lot of process issues, simple things, like physical security, how does the information get from a server to a laptop? Are you using little thumb drives? Are you moving it over? What's happened to those thumb drives? You know, in some cases, we're finding that, you know, hey, we're taking those thumb drives, you know, I'm throwing it in my purse and taking it home with me, you know, things like that, and not saying anything has happened bad, but that's, that's not a secure way to handle data, right? So we're finding a lot of those things, and really, when it comes to cybersecurity, the problem is not the head-on issues, the problem is in the process, in the seams, where, that is where most of the problems run into. And what we are finding with the perpetrators out there is they have a very focused effort to go into the elections in the swing states, and we've actually presented that to the Office of Attorney General so far, that we're specifically looking at Texas, Ohio, Florida, so far that there are concerted efforts for them to actually build websites, and the problem we have right now is that the websites, the names appear to be registered, but we can't find anything out there. So the problem we're running into is, once we find something out there, unless we prevent the problem through education, by the time they fire up these websites, you know, it'll be six months before the election, the problem will be gone before our, you know, legally we can get to it. So...
So then, if I understood correctly, there's $14 million that will be available if, you know, whatever deficiencies you all find, if we want to fix them, we can tap into those monies?
Yes, sir.
Will you assist us in the applications for that money?
Yes, sir. And as soon, as soon as we find out more information, we will send that out to the counties. And so we work kind of as your liaison with that as well. Right now, we are about 100, I won't say about, we're exactly, 155 counties into this, and we have 99 more to go, with about a 90 percent take rate, if you will. So we have a very high participation on this, and so there's going to be, you know, I wouldn't plan on a whole lot of money for each county, but I would venture to say, at the end of the day, there's probably going to be 210, 220 counties that that will be divided up amongst.
This is a presentation, but we have you further down the...
Number seven.
Number seven on the agenda to take action, so...
Yes, sir.
We'll get to it in just one second.
No problem. No, I mean, I mean...
I'm sorry?
You can jump out of order, too, if you want to pick up from seven.
Okay.
John?
Yeah, we'd like to hear from you, see what you think.
Excuse me, Judge?
Yeah, you know, this is the first we hear about it at the court, but I'm sure you've been talking, any comments, any input?
Actually, more elections have been talking, worked with AT&amp;T about this, but I think we already, we had sent the information to the judge as well, right?
I have talked to him about it.
Yeah.
You said that you wanted for the presentation...
Yes, yes.
Before approving the contract.
But I guess what the court needs is, you all are in favor of this.
Yes. Yes, we are.
Okay.
I guess we have to, I don't think we have to do this, but we, I guess, I participated on this, on this services to get that grant as well from the state.
Well, you know, I liked his first word, "free."
Free.
Yeah, so...
And right now, it's only a participation, right?
Yes.
Is there any legality issues based on this, Mr. Canales?
Well, that's what I was going to advise the Commissioners' Court. I received a call that's wanting to review the contract. It's a little detailed, and the mechanism is a little, because we're dealing with a private entity that's going through a state vendor, essentially, basically, this State Department, which has become the DIT...
DIR.
DIR, I'm sorry.
Department of Information Resources.
Which is now a state entity, so we're, and as you can see, the contract is called an inter-local, so we're dealing a governmental agency with governmental agency. The way it's phrased, and then just a quick glance at it, it's a pretty detailed document. I would really appreciate some time to look at it a little bit more in depth, to ensure that we don't, I mean, we aren't liable for any, because ultimately, the contracts and interlocals are the four corners of the document, whatever's in there is what it is, regardless of the representations that are made up here.
Correct.
I have no reason to doubt the veracity of what he has just said, and I think it's a great program. It helps us to protect our, because we are heading into new technology. Who better than the state to help us? But I'd like you all to approve, subject to my review of the document, to ensure that it complies with what he has actually represented for.
Very well. Anything else?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much for being here.
Thank you.
And if it's okay, I'll move to item seven, and this is to actually take action on the interlocal contract with the Department of Information regarding this election security. And so I'll entertain a motion to approve pending...
I move that we approve the contract, pending review by Mr. Canales.
Okay.
Take it, Judge.
Moved and second, discussion. All in fair, please, aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Okay, the other presentation is by Ms. Moreno.
Delilah.
Delilah, yeah.
I'm an account executive at Experian, and everyone knows Experian as a credit bureau, which we are. I'm not here to check their credit, but what I'm here to do is express interest due to some challenges that I've identified going from county to county in Texas. Now, I cover all 50 states, federal and local, and I've expressed an interest in our home state, well, my home state in Texas. What I've identified is there are some challenges in data, so, especially in the election administration side, where we have found that there are some challenges in finding people who are deceased in roles, locating people, getting better addresses, phone numbers, more accurate data, but not only in just the election administration side. I met last week with the county clerk and the tax assessor, and identified that our services could also be of assistance there as well. What we can do is help in collections, so finding people. Being a bureau, we have accurate data, because we're a regulated entity, we need to return accurate information. We pull from vetted data sources, like Social Security Administration Death Master File, which is a federal data source. Along with that, we also pull from the credit header data. So we look at the data, perform a precise match on the data that's being inputted, which at minimal is just name and address, and then with that, we return back, where does Delilah Reyes live? Well, it's actually not Delilah Reyes anymore, it's Delilah Moreno, and she lives in Florida. So that's what we would do to better assist, but not only for that, due to the recent audit findings that we did find in Starr County, we can fulfill those requirements of having information at hand. So not only be a batch process of returning data, but also utilize our solution all without, all throughout Starr County, meaning that everyone can have access to this tool, and it's not an extra cost per user, it's just everyone can actually use it. So we could be someone in the county clerk's office that has the same tool, they can have multiple users, there's unlimited users that can use this tool, but it'll help them make a better, better decision, give them better data, in line with security, I would think, as well.
So this information that you would acquire, that would belong to the county, right?
That's correct. You would be administering it.
Okay, so we could, we could go ahead and use it for any department that would need it, correct?
That's correct, sir. You can use it for any department, and any, any agency.
I tell you where I, you know, I think it'd be a great tool, it's in the tax collecting...
Yes, sir.
Because we get so much returned mail because of wrong addresses and deceased and whatever, that, you know, never get picked up, and we're spending a lot of money in postage, and the delinquent attorneys are not here today, but they cannot file because we don't know who owns and who's alive, and so I was saying that you have a $4,500 invoice due in October of this year?
We, I received approval to refer or defer the payment to October due to the riskiness of them having, or the election administration of having to fulfill a requirement by June 1. So I received approval to defer the payment, and there is an ATO sheet that you received there that highlights, you just gave me the date in October that you're agreeing to make the payment on, and I'll put it in there.
Well, we can pay it before if need be.
Oh, that's even better.
Then the, there's another 15 cents per record...
That's correct.
In the arrears. What is that for?
So that is per transaction. So every time you use the tool and you perform a search, that is 15 cents. Now, if it's the same search...
So then it doesn't belong to the county? We have to pay for the use of...
You do have to pay for the use, yes, sir. You have to pay for the usage of the tool. It's 15 cents per search that you would be, every time you perform a search, it goes through our algorithms in Experian, and then we return a match for that person.
Okay. And you say it's estimated 35, 3,550 records would be run during the timeframe, what timeframe is that?
Whatever timeframe they'd like to have it run.
Because the tax office has thousands of records of...
Oh, this is just specifically for the election administration side, but if there's a different department, an agency that'd like to...
It would be 15 cents for them, too?
It would. And then I would separate their funds based off of just their transactions. So, for example, county clerk will have their own subscription and their own administrator, so that way I can separate how many transactions were processed via just that, the county clerk, separate how many election administration is going to be processing, so each one of them can have their own separate PO.
Is there any way possible that one of them, let's say the county clerk, would run in there and check, "Elo Yveda," you know, he moved, he's in Oklahoma or whatever, and then he could delete it from everyone's file, instead of each one having to check if I'm here or not?
I don't know if your, if your tool has the capability of doing that and laying it all merged, so someone kind of having that main source and then it coming all the way down.
But would your software have that...
Our software has the capability for each person to use it, and each one of them will get the same response.
But it's not networked into the different departments?
They're all within, it's all within the web UI portal, so it's all the same tool, and they'll all get the same response back.
Okay. Okay, well, again, this is a presentation, I don't know if you all, yeah, you are.
Number eight.
Number eight. I don't know if the court has any other questions. Personally, I think it's a great tool, and I think it could be used...
This one-time implementation fee of 4,500, that's it. Let's say, for example, elections want to use it, it's 45, but not in a tax office, it's a 45 straight across the board.
That is correct. 45 straight across the board.
And it's going to cost us 15 cents for every time any department uses it.
That is correct. That is correct.
And each department's going to have their own domain.
That's right.
So nobody, for example, elections uses it, it's not going to meet in with a tax office.
No. You'll have your own separate batch and your own separate return, so you're allocated based off of just that agency or department, and if you renew the next year and the years after, you don't have to keep paying 4,500. It's just a one-time, just as it says, one-time fee.
But I don't understand the 15 cents...
It's per transaction. Every time you use it.
And you don't have a guest in the commerce that runs it?
Well, speaking to election adminis...
15 cents can accumulate into thousands?
If you have that many batches, that is, that is correct. It could accumulate to that many thousands. Just roughly, based off of the 3,500, you're looking at $600 for election administration, so they still fall below the $5,000.
Yeah.
That could come out of their own budget for their department, or no?
I would hope so.
Yeah. Okay, can it come out of the county department?
That'd be a...
That's, that's more internal for us.
Yeah. As to who pays for it?
Yeah.
I think each department would be responsible.
Each department, you can make a line item.
Do we have enough information to make a decision on that, just because of, on the, on the cost of it?
You can probably put a line item and set some...
I think the one that would have, yeah, we can, we can put a limit to it, say, no less than, I mean, no more than $1,000, or whatever we put in the budget, whatever we approve.
And we can audit that for you as well. You'll have access to full reporting, to see how many pulls you're getting.
You audit your homework? That's good.
Oh, yes, we're a very secure entity. We have to be very careful with the data that's coming in, what we're taking out.
I don't think it works that way.
Oh, no, that's great. That's great. So you'll have access to auditing and pulling reporting, determining who's...
Abby no va checar a todos.
So...
Yes, sir.
Whenever you adjust the item itself, I haven't seen any contracts, so I'd ask the same to, to make sure that what's on the page is representative.
Yeah, we, we have a sort of an unwritten policy, that any contract needs to be approved by local counsel...
I understand, sir.
Before we can approve. Any other question? Okay, well, thank you very much for your presentation.
Sure.
Miss Moreno, appreciate it.
No problem. Thank you.
You said you were from Florida?
Well, actually, I'm from Austin. I used to live in Florida, but I hope, hopefully, nobody knows that information now.
Okay. Okay, I guess we'll move to item eight, and this is to approve a contract between Experian Solutions and Election Administrator. Alexis, again, we'd like to hear from you all.
Yes, that's the contract that should be authorized.
Yeah, but, but, but do you all want this or favor this? You all can use this?
Yes, Elections Office, it is in favor of this program due to the reason, to the lawsuit that we had with the ACRU. One of the issues was deceased and returned mail, so it would be a great tool, and we do have to have at least something to report back to the legals of ACRU that we are purchasing a program.
Okay. Any questions for Alexis?
I guess it's going to fall on you to, to budget this?
Yes. Okay, thank you. And of course, you all to approve.
Yeah.
Does item, item number eight?
Item eight, yeah. I'll let her take...
A second motion, Judge.
Okay, is that pending?
Based on, on the legal counsel.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay, and the second is the same, Commissioner?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I have a motion, a second, to approve pending county attorney reviewing and approving the contract. Any further discussion? All in fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Next, next item is a, to approve a donation in the amount of 4,000 from Lime Barker, Groton, Blair, and Samson, and this goes into the scholarship fund. This is where we give scholarships to students of, from our, from the county that have parents working in the county.
Let's move to approve the...
Second. Moved and second to approve, discussion. All in fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. And I do want to thank Lime Barker, they have always been great partners in our community. I think this is a very worthy cause, so I thank them for it. Okay, next, we have a couple of subdivisions up for approval. One of them is Tierra Santa subdivision, Phase Two. Mr. Garcia?
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. At this time, I would like to present Tierra Santa State subdivision, Phase Two, for preliminary approval. This subdivision falls under Mr. Garza's precinct, and everything is in order.
Moved and second to approve, a preliminary approval. Discussion. All in fair, please, aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Next is another subdivision, North Gate subdivision, Phase Two.
Yes, sir. This one's just as well, it's for preliminary approval, for the North Gates subdivision, Phase Two. This one is under Mr. Commissioner Alvaro's precinct, and everything's in order.
I'm going to make a motion to approve it, but I need to make a comment to Mr. Garcia and Linda, she's here right now. Linda, and for some texts, and Rashido the Norte meet, there's a gate there, and everyone will remove it, so we can relieve the traffic, and I'll fix the road, relieve the traffic. It's not needed anymore, it's county road and county road, so can you help me with that? So, yeah, look.
Okay, we got it.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
We'll go out there and look at it, Commissioner.
Yeah, we'll go out there and look at it.
Moved and second to approve, discussion. All in fair, please, aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Item 12 is to approve the agreement for roof repairs at the Courthouse Annex. As the owner of the, where we, we had a settlement on the building, the suit that we had, and Commissioner Garza had mentioned about a contractor that goes, they, they pretty much, I guess, seal with a, with a foam or, it's some mixture that's really hard, really durable, and they went, they looked at the building, they gave us a, I guess, a plan for, for the repairs, and they guaranteed it for 10 years, and the price, I thought, was very reasonable. It was, right now, it'll be 49...
49,000.
Yeah, around 49,000, and they, they'll fix the whole roof. So I thought it was a good price and...
10-year warranty?
And a 10-year warranty.
Do they, do they give the appraisal this regard?
No.
No matter what?
Just ours. Yeah, I did tell them to go talk to the appraiser, so they might have something for you all.
Well, for 10 years guaranteed, it's not bad of a price.[1780.13]
Yeah, and they, and they will remove, well, they won't remove, they will lift all the air conditioning systems to make sure that the bottom gets done, you know, all the, they showed us pictures where the, the pipes that go into the buildings, I mean, there's holes all around them. They said they would fix all that. So they were very thorough, I was very impressed with the people. They were out of where?
Denver.
They were out of the valley somewhere. But, but you could tell they were very knowledgeable in what they were talking about.
I don't really know him, you know, but my nephew, he's an engineer, he told me about those people that do all that.
It's normal, isn't it?
No, it's, it's...
It's probably your thing. Probably your thing, no?
And that has run in there.
Yeah, they, it's, it's, it's like, I mean, they seal it with a squeegee, I mean, they do several steps to it and then at the end, it's, it's an aluminum color, of course, you can't see it, but I mean, it, it's well sealed.
For the price and the warranty, you can't go wrong. I just move in.
Second, your honor. Moved, and second, to approve, discussion. All in fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item 13 is a approval for a driveway application.
Yes, it's one idea in North Grove and the Cook area. I recommend we propose a driveway application with local center.
I second your honor. Moved, and second, discussion. All in fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. You know, and I apologize, I had said we'd move on to the proclamations, but I lost track of it. But it didn't take us too long.
No, wait.
First thing is, we have a proclamation for older American month. Anyone here? Okay. We have a few commissioners who, who fit the...
Yeah. Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. My name is Isabel Aranda and I have with me...
My name is Ally Rodriguez.
And we're here from Amigos del Valle and we're here to accept, of course, if you all agree to approve a proclamation on the older American month for the month of May. We have been serving the older citizens for over 40 years and this has been on Hidalgo, Cameron, and Willacy County. And just recently started doing that here in Starr County. And what we do is that we, we provide home-delivered meals to seniors that stay most of the time at home and that we try to help them. We do that daily visit to check on them, to see if they need anything. And we've been doing that here in Rio Grande City and the Starr County for the past four years. And we're here to ask for your...
How do you identify them?
As long as they're 60 years or older, they're considered to be senior citizens. So... And I guess, yeah, I guess that, well, we're here, you know, to serve the senior citizens because we want to honor them and to let them know that, you know, that we're here to help them. They already served their share, so...
But I really mean is, how do you know where to go? Who to go to?
Okay, yeah, we get referrals, we get referrals from, from doctors, from, from, yeah, from doctors, from relatives, anybody that is concerned about a senior that is, that you, you know, that needs help, we, we listen to those referrals and we try to help them, you know, as soon as possible. Of course, as funding allow us to do, but yes, anybody can, can do those referrals and we have an office here in Navasolos Street. We have a central kitchen where they prepare those meals that we deliver daily. And I know with your support and continued support, we'll continue to do this for, for many years. I'm sorry?
Do you go to San Isidro?
San Isidro.
Roma?
Uh, Roma, yes. Yes.
Motion to approve. Motion to approve proclamation, Your Honor.
Moved, and second, to approve. I do want to thank Ms. Aranda and Ms. Rodriguez for, for the work that you all do in, in the county. I'm familiar with Amigos del Valle, they've been around for many, many years and, and they really do a very good job. So I'm glad that you all are here, local, because how long has it been since you've been here?
About four years.
Four years.
But the other counties, 40 years, over 40 years. Yes.
Okay, well, thank you all so much and again, we appreciate what you all do.
Thank you.
I do have a motion, a second. All in fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Item 15 is also a proclamation and this is proclaiming May 2019 as National Police Month. As you all are aware, this month, there's been a lot of activities for our really first responders, police and fire department. And, you know, we certainly want to proclaim this month because, also because of the work that, that you all do. We, in fact, let's take both at the same time. This is for firefighters and police.
Second, Your Honor.
Moved, and second, to approve, discussion. All in fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. And then last, but certainly not least, Elaine, I guess we, we have the proclamation proclaiming June as summer meal awareness program.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. It's that time of year again. Summertime is upon us. We know that there are about 35% of the children here in Starr County experience food insecurity. And the role of the school districts in providing meals is so important in addressing hunger here in our county. So we are about to begin summer meal programming once again. Last year, we had over 100,000 meals served in Starr County at 47 sites and I think this year will be an interesting year to follow.
Good morning. My name is Juan Jesus Trevino. I'm the food service director in Roma ISD. This will be our fourth year that we do the summer meals and we have five school sites and 13 mobile sites that we go around different areas. And we started yesterday and for, for the amount of media attention and information that we sent out with the students, we had a good turnout.
Great.
And we just hope that it's gonna, it's gonna keep going. And we started the first Monday after school ended and it will go all the way through August 16th and the mobile sites. So thank you very much for Mr. Roy Peña as well and everybody for helping us out. We've asked for some things, some roads to be fixed, Caliche to be put because of the buses where they park, but there is a need. And all we need to do is, as you all know, just go out to, get off of the main highway and you'll see that there's a need. Thank you very much for what you all do.
Thank you.
And it's interesting that even though these meals are reimbursable from the Texas Department of Agriculture, the school districts still have to invest their own money to make sure that all the children are fed.
Good morning, Judge Vera, County Commissioners. My name is Patsy Ramirez and I'm with the Rio Grande City School District. While many people look forward to summer breaks, we also have many that do not because of the fact that children and families suffer from food insecurity. So they don't have access to healthy meals throughout those summer months when school is out. So I'm happy to let you all know that the Rio Grande City CISD is going to continue offering meals throughout the summer at 25 sites throughout the area. We provide mobile feeding sites all the way in the Paloma area of Alto Bonito La Grúa and here in Alvarez, at the Alvarez Community Center, in the Colonia, Las Lomas, so all throughout the, the area. So we're looking forward to, you know, servicing our, our kids and we really do appreciate the support from the county in getting the word out and getting as many people serviced as possible. So we really appreciate all of your support and all of your help. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
And we definitely look forward to having all of you participate in the summer meal program at the different sites. Thank you.
Motion to approve proclamation, Your Honor.
Moved, and second, to approve, discussion. Under discussion, I just want to thank the school districts. You know, I, I've been associated with, with this program for, I guess, the four years and, and the job that you all do is excellent. You know, I've seen the buses where the kids go and whatever, so I think it's a great program and I, and I do want to thank publicly Representative Ryan Guillen. I know he was instrumental in getting this program pushed four years ago. So again, thank you all and Elaine, of course, thank you so much for the work that you do in our county. So I do have a motion, a second. All in fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries.
Now we can take all the pictures. Now we really have to have the pictures. Do you...
No, 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 no. We're just, we're just...
Let's see him. He didn't win, did he?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Peña. Thank you.
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 Thank you.